All right, welcome to the Select Board meeting, August, sorry, October 3rd. We are getting started at 6:33. And we will start this as per usual with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that being said, we'll do our roll call here. Dave Heavenway chaired the Select Board.
Normandy Lake, select person.
And Marlo is unable to be with us at the moment due to distance and travel. I'm going to grab this so I have a mic stand. I think you can probably all hear me, but just in case, that should help a little bit. So that moves us on to announcements, of which I know there are a few. So I will start with a few quick announcements as we welcome the final quarter of this year and the foliage is starting to show up in town. First, we have had a very interesting report provided to the town and the Webster Historic Society, provided by Jim Garvin regarding the Battle Street home that has been up for bid. I would highly encourage anybody to ask for or take a look at the copy of it, especially if you bid on or win the property. Speaking of the Webster Historic Society, that brings us to the second announcement. They have now completed the Coiser Hill Cemetery gravestone photo project. Photos and their report of that should be available on their website for anybody that's interested. Third, I would like to champion the efforts of the library to bring knowledge to our voters for this fall's election. They will be having a candidate Q and A session with the voters hosted here on October 23rd. Unfortunately, I have another commitment, but I will be providing a question or two to be asked by the moderator of the event. They have invited both Republicans and Democrats, so it should be an informative discussion. If you know any candidates, please remind them that Webster has an extremely high percentage of active voters and that they should come out and get their information and platform views out. I believe they will have further details announced by the library soon, but you should also be able to leave questions for the candidates with the library. Fourth, Webster Community Power continues to make progress towards saving money on electricity. The draft plan is close to being finalized and with the first public hearing on it scheduled to be held November 16th at 7:00 PM right here. You should see notices for this in the usual places. And if you have any questions or comments about Webster Community Power but are unable to attend the public hearing, please leave your questions with our town administrator and the committee will do their best to answer everything at the hearing. Lastly, it is fire safety month. Consider this your public service announcement and reminder to change the batteries in your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors if they're using 9 volt batteries. Even if your detectors are hardwired, those batteries still get low over time without the power issues that our trees have been causing lately. So don't expect the batteries to last forever. Oh, and please be careful and respect everybody next Monday for whatever version of the holiday you may decide to observe. Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, or Canadian Thanksgiving for the expatriates. With that, do we have any further announcements?
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
And I hate to say it, but I'm sure a lot of people that lived in town a long time knew George Radcliffe as a teacher at this Webster School for eons. And he, I got informed today that he had died on October 1st. He was 85 years old. So anybody that's lived here a long time knew George, he was an icon. So sorry to hear that, but it happens, I guess. That's all I have.
And I have an announcement for the church. They're going to be doing a chicken barbecue on October 15th. It'll be from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. Tickets are $18. It'll be a drive-through beer barbecue at the Public Safety Building. And the menu is chicken, potato salad, coleslaw, cranberry sauce, roll, and apple crisp. Tickets are available at Town Hall or you can contact the church.
Okay. Are there any other announcements? All right.
Dave, can I say something, please?
Sure.
You mentioned fire safety and so forth. There are propane gas detectors you can purchase also and put in the house. We have a lot of homes in town that have that and it does detect, detect the propane if there is a leak within the home. Just another suggestion.
Yep, both for propane and natural gas if someone's doing that.
Well, not natural gas, we don't have natural gas, but the propane.
Well, it might be natural if you had a good pot of beans.
Oh, that's true.
All right, so that moves us on to the public hearing portion of this, which is for the discretionary preservation easement. Couple of quick ground rules as we go into a public hearing. We do like to take all of the public's input. However, there is a section where we will open up for comments on that. Please refrain from trying to make comments until that point in time. And when that happens, if you speak, please try to limit your time to approximately two minutes or so until other people have a chance to say something as well. So I believe one of you will be presenting that to us.
Russ is going to present.
Well, I think our applicants are going to be presenting to you.
Sounds good, so come on down and I'll give you the microphone I stole. Most of us don't think we do, but we could ask for it anyway.
All right.
So take it away.
All right, myself and my wife Stephanie, we relocated up to Webster in November of last year. We have a barn that's been dated back about 150 years. You guys have all the paperwork to show that. We're applying for the discretionary easement application to put that money back into the barn. I came from a farming family. Up to date now, I've redone the electric and all lighting inside the barn. Any broken or missing windows have been repaired. This barn is on a byway where people can come and go and see when they come by. So it's, it's not an eyesore. It's not going to be an eyesore. And there's just other maintenance things that still have to be done as, as, as we go on. So.
Okay.
Dave, if I may just jump in, that is under RSA 79D Barn Easement Act. It is, the property owner would have a lien on the property for the easement. There is a range that the town can go for an assessment reduction. And I believe the highest is 75, the lowest is 25% of the assessed value of the barn. And it also may affect the area that the barn is on a piece of land. So it might be in two, in two sections. Obviously, pretty much, but.
So I guess I'll start then. Is my understanding correct that when this is applied for, it's either under, and they have a couple of different categories, but it's under either public interest and benefit as like a landmark versus or as historic, et cetera? I believe there's, is it?
There are a few categories. I believe Mr. Perez's is the scenic byways, looking at scenic. There are, it's a historical.
From a public roadway.
So to quote 79D3 qualifying structures, I had to find it, which is why I was questioning. Section two discretionary preservation easement shall be considered to provide a demonstrated public benefit if it provides at least one of the following public benefits. And the section, they are apparently doing this under is A, which is there is scenic enjoyment of the structure by the general public from a public way or from public waters. Is that a direct understanding?
Correct.
Okay. And to, do we have a map that is available to show to people where this is? I don't have the big map. Sorry, I don't have anything to project.
This, and there is also a map in the packet I sent you.
This property's on Garrish Road.
Which.
And it's 3-1 Garrish.
Yeah, so it's this property.
It's now one across the road.
So if you're coming down, you go upwards Garrish and then around, sorry.
I just have a visual.
Stephanie, I will tell you, we have restored the house. We are in the process of restoring the house. We've put about, about $30,000 into the house. We've opened up all the historical beams. We've uncovered all the Indian shutters that were in the rooms. There were bypasses, I don't know if that's the correct word, behind all the chimneys that were in the house where there were hidden rooms. Yeah, thanks, I think there's dead people in there. So we've, we've done, oh, yeah, probably, yeah. So we've done that in the barn. Unfortunately, when we purchased it, the barn was not cleaned out. So we've removed about 100 years' worth of hay and animal waste that were in the barn. We've opened up the silo, which is extremely interesting because it's a square silo with rounded walls. I don't know if anybody's ever been in the barn. We've opened up a few of the animal stalls. We've removed a falling structure that was to the left of it. And we're in the process of restoring the whole piece of property. I don't know if that, anyone has any questions about that? We've been here since November and I don't think we've stopped working.
It's a lifetime job, you've got a lifetime job.
Yeah, we weren't anticipating moving. We thought we were an forever house and unfortunately circumstances have brought us here, which is very nice, but we want to restore the house back to its glory.
So I, I will simply comment by saying, thank you for doing what sounds like you're being a responsible homeowner and taking care of what you have. But before we go into further that, I want to cover some of the basics of the application so that people can follow along and know what we're talking about here. So it's a tiny map, I'm sorry. This over here is the row of houses that would be over by Pillsbury Lake. And this is going to be your Bashin Hollow coming up. And then that double really tight corner on the dirt road, if you're turning around and going down, that is right here as you turn onto Garrish. Their property is that corner lot. And the section up here is where you can see that Garrish Road is no longer Class 5. It is not passable, it is Class 6 road. So the first thing that I will ask is, based on your application and saying that you're doing this for the scenic enjoyment of the structure by the general public. General public doesn't really go down that road?
That's not true, since I've been here, we have hikers, we have bikers, we have hunters. If I'm out there and they asked, they'd like to see the barn, I stop what I'm doing. I bring them into the barn, I show them what we've done, I tell them what we're looking to do. It, it might not be car traffic, but there is a ton of pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, and hunting, hunting, hunting traffic.
And, and last month, we had a couple come and ask if they could use our barn for a photo shoot, I guess for whatever their family pictures. And we let anybody stop, they take, they took a bunch of pictures. They were there for like two or three hours. People bring their dogs to swim in Everett's Pond that's back there for the fire department. I don't know, we're only here a year, not even. So the amount of people that have stopped and asked if they could take photos, it's a little.
We are pretty welcoming and hello to our neighbors kind of communities, so.
We get a lot of, a lot of hikers, a lot.
And horseback riders.
And horseback riders, yeah.
Okay, so that, that is where you're coming from with that particular statement. Okay. And somewhere in here, there is a, or there, please, here we go. So determining eligibility for RSA 79D discretionary preservation easements for historic agricultural structures. And this was written by the New Hampshire Historic Agricultural Structurals Advisory Committee from the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources and is to be used for this determining of eligibility. They go into definitions of structures and so on. I'm not going to go there, it's, it's a barn, so it qualifies under a structure of the right type. In decide, further guidelines, in deciding whether to accept a discretionary preservation easement, RSA 79D3 establishes that the local governing body of the municipality shall determine whether the structure provides one of those following public benefits. The scenic enjoyment portion, which is what they're talking about, historically important, and then specific aesthetic features and historical and cultural integrity. And that is typically determined by eligibility of being on the National Register of Historic Places or the State Register of Historic Places, which we are not talking about here. Unless that has happened and, okay. So in addition, the law states that in determining whether a historic agricultural structure demonstrates the necessary public benefit, the local governing body shall have reference to guidelines adopted by the committee, which is what I'm reading from now. And those guidelines are outlined in Attachment 2. Attachment 1 is what kinds of structures, so I'm skipping over that. So the first one is under the public interest and benefit. So consider, is it a familiar landmark? Is it visible from the public road and/or public waters? And what extent does it contribute to scenic qualities of the community and region? And then is there interest or support for the structure's preservation? Examples such as commitment to preservation, the structure surveyed by the Historical Society, including the town's preservation plan or historic district. And that sort of thing with also letters of support from a local heritage commission or Historical Society, of which I believe they were contacted and did not provide anything?
Did not, exactly.
Okay, so they were contacted for that?
I was told that she's away this week on vacation.
Okay. So I guess we should start with this section. I'm not quite sure how we would determine whether the barn is a familiar landmark versus the corner that people might turn on, that's before you get there.
I have a question. I would like to personally see it.
Come over.
Pardon?
Come over.
No, no, I mean, can we, this sounds terrible, but can we just like, can we do something on this next time we have a meeting if we both go, well, all three of the selectmen should see it? Have you seen it, Russ?
No, I haven't.
You can actually table it and have a.
Yeah, table, that's what I would think.
I was going to suggest.
I want to go through the.
The Historical Society was unable to tour the barn. We've had individual members of the Historical Society come over to the house to look at the house and the barn, but because they just opened their meeting house and they had their celebration, there wasn't enough time in between there and this meeting.
Right, which is why I would kind of like to table it myself.
I'm going to point out that there is a certain period of time we have to act on the application, which we're in process of, but you could allow us more time if you wanted to. And, because I think you're allowed 60 days to act on these. And then we can take table it, go to the next session, give you guys opportunity to do it. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so I wanted to try to cover some of the basic procedural stuff.
The one thing I did want to mention that, and my senior brain is not working right, but there is a man, a really, a Bosman has a really, a barn man, I should say, that has written a book and all, has he come to see?
It's John Quarter.
And he's been in the barn.
Yes, Mr. Porter, that's it.
He gave me the paperwork, his letter's in there.
Oh, okay, okay.
He's toured the barn, he, he, he has pictures in his book of the barn and the property.
With the prior owners, you mean? Who did you buy that from?
The Van Loons.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can do that, yes.
Yes, I've been in that barn too.
It's a lot cleaner. That wasn't snarky, was it?
So, so that brings me back to how, how do we determine things like whether it's considered the local landmark?
That's kind of.
And things of that nature that are very like subjective? Because it's great that it's a, like, it'd be one thing if like, you know, take a left at the school or take a right at the, at the barn, which, you know, everybody would say for like, just past Town Hall, take a left to go to the dam.
You take a right at the, you take a right at the schoolhouse.
Yeah.
But it's definitely on the road, so you can't miss it.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely on Garrish.
Yeah, right, no, I mean, it's right there. It's not like it's on their property 150 feet away, it's right there.
You can see the barn quite clearly from Bashin Hollow and Garrish. And I've done tons of tree, I've taken all the vegetation and trees down.
It's a major highway.
You can see, you can see that whole barn when you're in your car at that corner. Whether you're coming up Garrish, going north, south, east, or west, you can see that barn.
There's no question that it is visible from a public road or public waters. And then the second part of that would then be, how would we quantify the extent that it contributes to scenic quantity qualities of the community and region and local residents? And so that would be that next section of the public interest and benefit. What is the typical process?
As is quite common in the state law, they tell you these things and they don't really quantify exactly what it is. So I think that you would have nothing better than it would be a Select Board decision. Obviously, a barn that's up the lawn driveway and you can't see it from the road is a different type of property than this barn. But I think that I would encourage you to go see the barn.
Yes.
And, and see what, see what your opinion is. I think that if you asked several different people what qualifies it as historic or pleasing to see or so forth, you're going to get all varied answers. Of what it is, no, it's not in 127, we apply it every day, or things like that. But you still can see it from the road.
I mean, my first reaction when I saw the property, when I drove down Garrish Road, I said to myself, oh my God, what's, there's a barn down here? So there was a big curiosity to the, it's in a place where you normally wouldn't see a barn from a roadway.
Well, before you got to the house, you mean, you were just thinking that dirt road wouldn't have a big barn.
Correct, yes.
I, I see your hand, but I'll get to public comment in a bit.
You're skipping over major comments that you're bringing up.
I'm, I'm talking to the administration on how we might be guided to do that.
I know.
Next would be the historical and agricultural significance. That is not what he is applying under. And then the next section is then the degree to which tax relief will help preserve the structure. Considers, consider questions such as the use and condition of the structure, their over time future investments, plans for repair and renovation, and their use of and plans for preservation tools and conservation easements and investment tax credits, as well as registering to the national, local, or state historic registration lists. The, then there's use of the structure, and he mentioned one of the, the main one when we were doing this, which is, is it going to be continued to use, be used for its agricultural purposes? They did mention that it was going to stay a barn. Are you planning on doing actual farming on the farm or? Okay, so it's intended to stay as a farm, not turn into a working farm?
As part of the easement, the owner has quite the responsibility to maintain the barn and to keep it in good condition and to even restore it. You know, I'm not sure what stage it's in, but even more to its natural period that it was built. So it's not, it's not merely that the owner enjoys a lower assessment. There are reasons for that law and teeth doing it, I guess we like a better way to put it.
Can I ask, do you, is there still an apartment in that barn?
It's not an apartment.
It's not in the barn, it's a separate building attached to the barn.
Oh, attached to the barn.
It has nothing to do with the barn.
I think, I think he had his medical office in it, yeah, no, we don't have that.
Okay, and I think it was, isn't that, I was going to, seems to me that had a really overhaul not to, you know, with the Van Loons owning it. You don't know, I know, and I can't remember.
And I'm not, the barn, that cabin is attached to the barn, but that has nothing to do with what I'm, what I'm sitting here for. It's strictly the square footage of the barn and nothing else. And it just came to my attention a week or two ago that there is another small barn there. That's also, I could have added that on to that, I didn't know that, which I'm not looking to do. So there is, there is another structure there, but I'm only concerned about what's sitting in front of you. And that's it.
Okay. To continue from, from that document for everybody's edification. Then we consider the degree to which the building's preservation reinforces other local and state goals and policies, such as, is it an agricultural destination? A bicentennial location? Farm of distinction, a tree farm, or the, or part of the New England Green Pastures Project? There are additional questions for scenic and cultural byways and for matching with regional plans and local master plans. There are also things based on current use for goals maintaining the character of the state's landscape and conserving the resources. For example, continuing to use it and treat it as a farm. So that is the guidance that is provided for determining the eligibility by the preserving historic agricultural structures discretionary preservation easement. And that is enough.
Are you under, do you have enough property being the current use?
We are.
Yeah, I thought you did.
We are. I mean, I can't make this any simpler. I don't want this barn to fall down.
Well, we, nobody wants it to fall down.
I'm making a plan and we're not talking like 10,000, it's a minimal amount of money, but any money that I can save is going back into that, back into that barn. I can't, I can't make it any simpler than that, that's, I mean, that's it.
So perhaps.
Dave, that if the board scheduled an appointment with Mr. and Mrs. Perez to look at the barn and the full board, and that may also give a chance for the Historical Society to weigh in on what their opinion is and reschedule, come back, I don't know whether two weeks would be too short, maybe next month, beginning of November. This tax credit would not be in effect until 2023 at this point.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to cover the.
I'm just, yeah, I'm not trying to disturb things.
Since you mentioned the tax credit, what, obviously there's a percentage based on a range. You mentioned 25% to 75%, and that is off the assessed value of the barn itself, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and so, and that is permanent or for X number of years? 10 years?
And they have the option of.
10 years, 10 years.
Thank you, so that is a 10-year easement that is considered at that point?
And at that point, it could be revisited.
And assuming the laws have not changed, may be renewed, basically.
Right.
And that would be subject to the current sitting select board at the time?
Correct.
That's right.
All right. Do you have any other comments on process or similar forums at this point?
One thing I'm gonna mention is you kept saying that he was applying under one thing, so it's not what he's applying under. He can, it has to meet one of the three qualifying.
Not all three of them, just one.
So just one of these three reasons is gonna have to qualify.
Right.
And we have to look at all of them. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay, so it's not look at one that he's applying for?
Right, it's all of them, we look at all of it.
Sounds good, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure the process is right.
That's exactly why we're doing this.
All right.
Do you have any other comments on process or guidance that we have gotten from anywhere else?
No, I think, as I've mentioned before, I think the board really should see the barn.
Yes, I do too.
And I think that if the historical society can provide their input, that would be very helpful to them.
Yep, so I definitely want to do that and then also involve our third board member.
Yep.
The, do you have any other questions or comments before opening it up to people who allow questions or comments?
No, I kinda know the house. I have my son's head friends living in the house and all that, so I, I've been there and I've seen the barn and all. But I'd like to see it again, cause it, things could change. So, no, I'm, I'll be quiet.
All right, and I'm familiar with the location. I, I drive by the road bringing my trash down to the dump, so, sorry, the transfer station. But that would be my comment there, and I definitely want to do that. So we should set up a time for the select board to go down and visit the location.
Have to wait for a while.
And if we are waiting for the, if the historic society has not had time to get back to us versus has decided not to get back to us, I definitely want to hear from them, so that we know for sure. And then.
I mean, Russ is correct, it's a 60-day window that we have. I think that it makes sense to come back in November, so we have enough time for everybody to get all their things together and to give you a chance to come up with a schedule.
Roughly how long have we had the application?
The application came, I think, at the beginning of September.
Beginning of September?
Right.
Okay.
But he could make a hearing in September, so we did the first weekend in October.
Gotcha, okay. So we have now acted on it. Do, do we have to make a decision by the 60 days or have?
I don't think the decision needs to be made in the 60 days, you need to act on it within the 60 days.
So that is good as far as procedures and policies. That being said, do we want to start with a vote that we want to go see the property with the full board?
Oh, I'd like to do that, and even if we wanted to get the historical society, that would be good.
We can reach out.
Pardon it?
We can reach out.
Do we need, do we need a vote for that or just consensus?
I don't think you do, no.
Okay, so with that, do you have any other comments before I open it up to the public?
Like I said, I can't make it any simpler. I don't want the barn falling down.
So with that, I would remind people that please try to limit your comments in time and topic. And please now open this up to public comment at 7:07.
Can I get off first?
Well, they may ask you questions too, well, they'll ask us, but we can refer. Yes?
Tom Pearson, you made a comment that you didn't really know if it would benefit the town or people driving by. I just make it one comment this way. If you really don't think it would benefit the public, then you need to declassify that as a scenic road. Because if it's not gonna help the public, we don't need a scenic road down there, and let's open up that road so Emmett can plow that road and maintain it and widen the road. Because if it's not a scenic road, it's not benefiting the town or anybody else either, and we don't need a scenic road. Because it's not gonna benefit nobody.
Thank you for your comment.
So you can't have it both ways. It's either gonna benefit him and her just like it will everybody else as a scenic road. So it's gonna benefit everybody for a scenic road, just like it will them. So it's gonna be for both of them or nobody. So if we're not gonna help them, we don't need a scenic road either.
Yep, so again, that's why we're, we're going through this process and, and maybe I misspoke, but I think what I said was that we need to figure out the way that this is determined.
Yes.
As opposed to that it is or is not.
That's what you said.
The, I know that at least portions of it, is all of Garrish Road considered scenic? Or is it all of the class five? I think we should have that on file.
It should.
So can you hold that for the next time then?
Sure, it's just a classified, I think it would be interesting.
That's why I mentioned, yeah, it's probably just the classified portion, but let's, let's make sure that we know all of those details for the next time. So thank you very much for the comment. Next.
Tara Gunnigal, I was gonna say that, that barn, it's a gorgeous barn, it's a gorgeous location. Garrish Road is a very, very well-known road in town. The Garrish family, very important to the town of Webster. And also important is Nancy Rideout's schoolhouse. It's the best-kept original schoolhouse that we have left in town. She's got the original blackboards still on the walls, holes in the floor where the desks were, were screwed down. So the, people have two things that they can look at, this historic barn beyond the historic Garrish Road, and they will see the barn and the little red schoolhouse, which, you know, it's, that's an important building in our town. So that was just my comment. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful barn.
Thank you for your comment. I'll ask you the, the question since, since you brought it up, the schoolhouse.
Hey, hey.
Since you brought it up, the, the schoolhouse. How much of that and how accessible to the general public is that?
Nancy is very proud of the house, and when I was with the historical society, she said, you know, we could come in and, I, I took some pictures inside because it was just amazing. She's just, she's a fixture in town too. She, it would be up to her what she would wanna do, whether she would open it up maybe once a year or something, and maybe they could open up their barn once a year. But that's, that's 100% of them.
Yeah, it's private property.
But it's, it's just, you know, in that little area, Bashan Hollow, the name of that road has, has a story behind it too. But, you know, that's, both roads are just very, very well-known in Webster, very historic, and everybody knew this. If they had just said it's, it was the Van Loons' house, everybody would have known where it was. You know, that's just well-known in town, so.
And just on a side note, my husband spent all two days helping Nancy. He cut down limbs, he, he's helping Nancy with her outdoor, cause she's, I don't wanna say getting up there, but, he's cutting branches and cleaning her property up and, and stuff like that, so kinda cleaning that whole area up and bringing it back a little, so it's more accessible.
Yeah, it looks nice up through there.
It's nice to have your folks in town.
Oh, thanks.
Thank, thank you for being neighbors it sounds like. Next comment, yes?
Fairly on. I just want to refer back to the town website and their cultural and historic resources that we have. And specifically listed on our own website, several old barns in Webster. Examples include those owned by the Van Loons on Garrish Road, historical significance. I don't know how long ago that this, this, you know, website was written, but even at that point, it was recognized as being, you know, of historic importance, and I don't think we can argue with that.
Can we grab a copy of that to add into this application packet? Thank you. Thank you for the comment. I believe you were earlier, so go ahead.
No, and what I've seen, I met these folks when they moved into town, stopped and introduced myself. And back and forth, not that I'm up there every day, but just the work they've done around the place and cleaned it up. I mean, the Van Loons did a great job, and then everybody slows down. And then these young folks moved into town up in the neighborhood and it's, they, it, it really looks good. I mean, it, it's amazing, and I know I'm getting off track here, but that young man right up back, Ben, that what he's done to his place, and Ron and Michelle brought that place back down on Pleasant Street, what Susan's done on the Allen Farm, all these old places, and it's, it's bringing Webster back alive and it's, it's cleaned up. A lot of people have spent a lot of money to bring a lot of this whole stuff back, and I know what it costs. So thank you for all you're doing up on that end of town, sir.
Thank you. Yes?
So it's a lovely barn. I was here for the odds, too.
Oh, please come back. It's completely redone.
Oh, good.
Don't judge me on the house.
No, no, it was lovely then.
Well, it still doesn't look like that anymore.
But Garrish Road is a class five after your house?
Mm-hmm.
If that would get enlarged, where would it extend to? What road would it hit? Would it ever hit a road?
So Garrish is currently class five at that corner and by their place.
Okay.
Garrish continues from that point as a class six road and ends at Dinget Corner, which would dovetail into where Deer Meadow and Close Pin Bridge and Pleasant Street meet.
So somewhere down the line with Webster growing slowly, that might be opened back up?
I doubt that.
I doubt that, okay.
There.
That land down through there will never get developed.
It would technically be possible. I, I would count the likelihood as extremely low. So, but thank you for your comment. That is, that is very observant, and yes, that is exactly where we're talking about. Yes?
Yeah, going off like what Emmett was saying.
I can.
One of the, oh, sorry, Ben Faxon. Going off like what Emmett was saying, one of the reasons we loved Webster before we moved here is we came through and we said, it almost looks like time stood still here, and any chance that people can preserve that, you know? I like that.
Yes?
In doing research, Sue Roberts, in doing research for the roads for Emmett, it was brought to my attention that Mutton Road, Pleasant Street, Dinget's Corner, Garrish Road was the main, main highway for moving your, your sheep, your animals to the plantation in Hopkin Town. So there's probably a lot of history with that barn, and I have a question. Is there a list of old barns that, like, with a state, like, you'd be put on that list?
I have not even dove into something like that yet, but that's on my list to do.
I think there might be, and even though you, maybe not on some national registry, but I think there is a place where you can go look, cause people do that, they'll drive around looking for old barns.
Right.
And, and it might be that you'll end up on that list, like, I'm not saying that so, but I just have a hunch that that.
Happy throws a shoe, they won't make it home.
All right, is there any further public comment or question? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion at 7:18. And do you have any further comments or questions based on what we have heard at this point?
No, sounds good. I'd like to go up and see it, that's.
Yep, so we have the consensus to schedule that and to schedule that as the whole select board to go visit and see it. We have the consensus to wait for slash request from the historic society that they let us know one way or another. Whether they are expecting to write a letter in support.
Well, it'd be nice to have them with us too, yeah. I mean, I think that would be nice.
They mentioned that they've been up there, but not as a group, so hopefully they can. I mean, I'm not gonna try to schedule the historic society, but it'd be nice if they, after they have their meeting, decide what they want to do.
No, that's, they could tell us. We're easy to schedule, I know.
And of course, I would like to have the whole board chime in on something like this that, well, not completely precedent-setting in town. Definitely will turn some decisions into a likely precedence going forward. And with that, and everybody kinda wanting to wait, yes?
I just wondered, do we have any other barns? I think we do, one, one that yours, do you think, isn't it?
No, no.
Whose barn is that? Was it John's? Was that your barn that's listed?
No, well.
No, I think it's. The one that's listed?
Oh, Bob Pearson?
I think so.
Elizabeth Pearson, 142 Little Hill Road.
Oh, okay.
So.
He's that different though.
Quickly bring up a calendar, so I can get my dates right. With that being said, I would like to table further discussion and continuation of the public hearing until our meeting of the select board on November 7th, which starts at 6:30, just like we did tonight.
Okay, second, second, we need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so thank you very much for your presentation, your application, and thank you all for your comments. And we will continue that.
Thank you.
The fuller set of information at the next one. All right, that moves us on to appointments, which is our department heads. So come on down.
Go ahead, sir. Well, I got the camera going. So, here's what you've had for the police department for the last month. We have $86,445.70 left in our, remaining in our 22 budget. This is 28.89% left. Gives us plenty to go through the year with, we should have excess at the end of the year, which I'm happy about. From September 1st to the 30th, we had 67 motor vehicle stops, seven summonses with fines of $942.40. Last month was the quietest month we've had in arrest, but we've had one this month, that's it, for a criminal charge. The officers handled 59 calls during the month of September, and I'll, I'll give you just a few of the list. Civil complaints, so that somebody's got an idea of what we actually do go to. Civil complaints, juvenile complaints, mental health issues, there's been a few of those lately. Motor vehicle complaints, road hazards, welfare checks, we check on citizens if somebody's not sure if they're okay, if they won't answer their phone or whatever, we've done that a few times this month. Sex offender registries, they are up, suspicious persons, vacant house checks, citizen welfare checks, police information requests, assist the fire EMS, animal complaints, disturbance complaints, and assist other agencies. And one missing person that went out to the fire department, helped us the other night with a number from Fish and Game. We had about 35 people out, I believe, 35 or 40 people, Compton Fire Department assisted us, Salisbury, a number from the Webster Fire Department, five fishing game officers. Half, half of the Northwoods Law was here. And it took about two and a half hours when we found a crew by the Compton Town Line from Manchester Drive.
Oh, jeez.
So.
Helped through the swamps and water.
But it was a, a really good outcome, so we were happy about that. Nobody got hurt, and we made it home safe and sound. Other than that, we applied for a highway safety grant, we received, or will receive, we're waiting for it to come. for a highway safety grant. We received, or will receive, we're waiting for it, thirty-four hundred dollars for extra patrol within town for a motor vehicle violation, so that'll be above and beyond regular patrol, paid for by the highway safety program. That's what I got.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, funds coming from grants and stuff such as this, we would need to accept as unanticipated, yeah, accept as unanticipated revenue?
Yes.
Okay. Being that this is under ten thousand, we should not have to schedule a public meeting?
You need not do a public meeting.
So, I would move that we accept the roughly thirty-four hundred dollars extra from the highway safety grant as unanticipated revenue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chief, just to remind me, I should know how this works, but when you receive this grant and you're able to assign your officers for more patrols, is that what the purpose is?
Yes.
And the money for their payroll and taxes is offset by this grant? Am I right on that?
Absolutely. Yep. So, we'll keep tallies on everything, and of course, I'll hook up with you to make sure we get right to the penny for all the added insurance and purposes so that we come out even at thirty-four hundred dollars.
Do you expect it in this fiscal year?
I should have it hopefully by the end of November at the latest.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hey, I hate to put you on the spot.
Not at all.
But I asked the Select Board for permission to use the safety building for the church, for the chicken barbecue. You guys have been busy and we've been connecting, but just on more stuff. Can I have your questions?
Absolutely.
Can you share that?
We'll be there anyway.
I figured you would be.
Yeah.
I told him I was going to ask you, and I just wanted to follow through with what I was supposed to do. I didn't have a feeling you'd have a problem with it, but I wanted to make sure.
It's a good barbecue. Everyone wants to do it.
Oh, yeah, everybody wants to do it.
So, I can take that off my list, because Russell's already brought up the chicken barbecue, so. You all good with police chief?
Uh, you have any questions or comments?
No, Eric does a good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, he does do a very good job. I don't know how I can work with him, but he's pretty good.
At times.
The other night, the other night at the rescue, the new member, Richie, texted me the next morning and was amazed how everybody worked so good together. And he's worked for other police departments and law people and stuff, but he was just amazed how well the communications and how well everybody worked together on that. And he just, he was thankful that, of all that. So, I texted him back and I said, "Well, you did a great job, too," and he says, "You don't know how much that means to me." So, in the past, I had a reputation, maybe you're watching tonight, I hope you are, that I couldn't get along with people and work with the police department, but, uh...
It's changing.
It's changed.
Sooner or later, you'll get there.
Well, so we should be thanking you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, and this is why we, as a town, generally try to support all of our safety and first responding crew, because these are the kinds of outcomes that, that really matter. So, thank you both, and thank you to everyone.
We appreciate it. I know everybody's, no, it's, it's, it's beyond us, because we'd
be nothing if we didn't have the people underneath us.
Absolutely.
Surely we was even there with her buggy helping. Okay, so let's see. I have forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-one cents left in the fire budget. They came out last week and serviced the pumps in the, in the three pieces of apparatus. Everything passed with flying colors. The third Friday of this month, maybe the 21st, Perkins Pump's coming back out to test pump the trucks. They go through quite a, quite a pace and pump a lot of water, and they have to hold a special gallons per minute for so long to pass everything, so that's all going to take place. We do that once a year. So, that's happening this month. They'll be coming out to go through all the MSAs, the breathing apparatus for their yearly inspection. That's going to happen between now and the second week in November. The Cascade will be serviced at the same time. The Cascade system is what fills the bottles that breathe, so the air's going to be tested. So, that's quite a process, so that's all scheduled. I think we're at a hundred and fifty-seven calls, 911 calls, but for the year, that doesn't include the fire permits and inspections and all that. That's just emergency calls. Monthly meetings, Capital Area Meeting, I attended that in Washington two weeks ago. We passed the Capital Area Budget. It's twenty-four towns in the Capital Area, the town aware, the town aware, we just took their barn. We're dispatching for them. They're in the Capital Area now, so as of last week, they started. They'll be the fourth biggest community in the Capital Area, so there's a lot going on in the Capital Area with the updates and all that. So, I think one point five million dollar budget we did for that. The folks at the department at the meeting last Wednesday night decided that they would like to try the truck or treat again on the Halloween night. If you folks are okay with letting us use the firehouse for that?
I don't have a problem with that, do you?
No.
We haven't had it the last couple of years.
It's cold, yeah.
All that stuff, but they'd like to try it again, so if we have your blessing, then they'll probably do, they'll do that again.
It's good. Is it going to be October? Is it going to be on Halloween, the 31st?
Yeah.
From what time?
Uh, 5:30 to 7:30.
Oh, okay.
And we have a department head meeting that night as well. I'll be excused, because I have, I'll be at another, I won't be there, but I have, I have two other places I'm supposed to be at, but I don't know, I have imagined where I'm going to be, but...
We'll just come.
Okay.
Oh, Lord, no.
So, um, yeah. So, that's the firehouse stuff.
A comment for the truck or treat. I think it was the last year before COVID that there ended up actually being a conflict with timing for that and Hillsbury Lake throwing a similar type Halloween event. So, you may want to talk with the Hillsbury Lake folks, just to try and see if either A, you can get everybody to join this one for the town, or B, if you can have alternate or slightly different times for each other. Just a comment, so. Okay.
Okay. So, we'll check into that. Thank you for your, for the information. All right. So, on the highway.
So, we're on the safety building budget.
Yeah.
Can I add something to that just for a second?
What do you want to do?
So, we had the generator serviced.
No, hold on. That isn't the one. Right here.
We had the generator serviced on that, on the, at the safety building. Hadn't been serviced in two years. So, we had it resurfaced. They got it backed. It needs some other work to it. Be somewhere around twelve or thirteen hundred dollars for them to new battery, change all the hoses, change the thermostat. It's got a heating unit in it that's set at a hundred degrees, so it heats year-round to keep that generator, the engine and the generator, at a hundred degrees. And the guy says, "That's absolutely wrong. It should be set at forty," so they're going to replace that. He says, "That should save us about a hundred dollars a month on our electric bill, because all summer long that stays heated at a hundred degrees."
Wow.
Which is insane.
That's definitely silly.
So, they're going to service that, and it's like twelve hundred bucks, and we've got, like, plenty of money in our budget for that. So, it's just it on the public safety side.
Thank you.
Okay, on the highway side, they ordered the salt. That will be here, well, whenever they call. They usually call when they're on their way. They ask me my hours. I told them twenty-four seven, so if you see trucks out here at midnight, it's only me. So anyways, let's see, block grant. I have fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and two cents left in that budget. And roads and streets, which I don't know the difference between a road and a street. Well, I do, well, they're both the same, but however you have it.
The spelling's different.
Um, what's that?
The spelling's different.
Yeah. Eighty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-six cents left in that budget. Dearborn, Jeffy Dearborn, that owns Old Yankee Tree, came to town today. We had it scheduled to take down the four great big pine trees as you head up Pleasant Street from Dinget's Corner, that were in the ledge, that were rotten, and so when we come in there with a rock pounder to get them, to widen that corner out, so them trees are gone. And Clayton, Clayton said his wife would sleep real well tonight. Let's see, let's see what else we've been doing. Let's see. Corn Hill, Close Pin Bridge to Corn Hill. That Dinget's Corner has been shimmed and paved, and the pipes have been changed. We took the trees down at the end, a section of Centennial, which you folks knew. Even people that, it's just amazing, the people that can't believe how well they can see coming out at the end of the road. Now, I've got a lot of good comments on that.
Well, that was a dangerous spot. Well, you know that.
So, it's paved all the way, overlaid all the way to the bridge. The shimmin' machine is coming the week, the week after Columbus Day. We've rented that for a couple of days so we can shim out the new part, the sixteen hundred and eleven feet we did on Deer Meadow. Will be all shimmed out, the dirt shim on the sides and Corn Hill and Close Pin Bridge Road. And while the tar company was in town, I had enough, we had, got them plates back in place on the bridge, and we tarred the bridge.
That looks great. That looks...
So, everybody thinks we have a new bridge, so I told them to send a million bucks to the highway department, and the other million to the police department, and we split it, and we got a new bridge for them.
Yeah. It looks good, though.
It, it takes a lot of jiggers out of the front end of them little cars, and it will, it will, I think it will be good. We'll be able to plow it anyways.
Well, that's, yeah. I have a silly question. Somebody asked me, when you tar the road, do you crown it in the middle a little so the water runs off? I, I didn't know the answer, so I said I'd ask you.
Uh, in a, in a twenty-one foot road, we try to crown it at least two percent.
Really?
One to two percent on that. And then if you come into a corner, it's, when you're shimmin' a road, when you're building a new road, you can get it pretty close, but when you're shimmin' a road, I mean, you, you can, to, to get that, some of the old road has five and six percent gr, in, in ten feet, which, but, I mean...
But you can never, a normal person would never see that, because I said, "I don't know if it's crowned or not," but that's nice. So, I have an answer. Thank you.
Yeah, because you, yeah, you want the water to shed.
Yeah, right.
And then it keeps it better. So, Larry, Larry started grading. He did the Providence Road last, one day last week in Mutton Road, yeah, Friday, in Cluff and Sandin today, and then we'll be getting the roads put to bed for winter.
It's coming.
It is.
No matter what, it's coming.
So, I assisted the police. It was on the state road this morning, but I pulled out of the end of the car road, and there was this great big bag of trash, box bags that was scattered all the way down the road, and here's the cop sitting there, and I'm going, "I can't just drive by and leave them there and there or whatever," so we all got out and picked up the neighbor's trash and, somebody dumped it. So anyways, we didn't leave it behind, so.
As they say at the, at the entrance to the transfer station, please secure your loads.
So, I can't think. We've got another thousand yards of sand that we're going to haul in from our land on the Dustin Road before winter and pile across the street. That still needs to be done. On the second week of October, the tractors will be mowing. We've got that scheduled. So, the other second, if everything goes good, that's when that's going to happen. Last Thursday and Friday, down Penny Cook Circle and Concord Drive, where we did that project last year. I knew it was going to happen, but we ran out of daylight last fall, so we put a tar swale in through there so the driveways and the dirt don't get washed out in, to make the water flow better. So, that made a couple people down there smile. So, that's done. People from Water Solutions called today. They had a leak on Deer Meadow Road. They were going to dig up. They've been great, no, they're great, they're good people. They call and they communicate and...
Oh, that's good.
And no surprises.
No. I met them last week when they were first working the week.
Doing their testing, yeah. So, um...
Awesome.
Probably forgetting something, but if you folks have any questions?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll go back to fire for one second.
Yeah.
I know previously the, you wanted to work on the dry hydrants, but there had been the cyanoboom issue with the river. As that has cleared up, is it, is still a good time for working on the dry hydrants, or has that been...
Yeah, no, no, that's going to happen before it freezes up. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, that's one that, by my, it's covered over. I was going to ask it. I had it written down. I just didn't really enjoy it.
Yeah, that one.
And just a request from me, because I want to make sure that we are able to continue working on, on the project next year. The, try to, please, both of you, try to schedule a time with Russ so that you can fill out, file, and get set the process for the second driveway for the, because I know there's going to be at least an application and then processes and waivers and, and other things that will get involved later on. So, I'd like to get that started so that hopefully come next year, when the weather turns into the right weather, we can actually do the work. So, that's my, my comment.
Yeah, because I have the pictures, I have the pictures of the motor vehicle accident that time. I don't have the pictures from way back when we had the car fire and then couldn't get out, but I do have the pictures of the...
Do we have any reports for that, like police reports on file for it?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
We covered the accident. I got pictures of it from...
Well, the accident and the car fire, that was there, and, um, yeah. So, we've got a lot to do before snow, but, you know, we're ready. I had my old double winger running this weekend. I oiled her all up, steam cleaned her, sat in her and smiled, and she's ready to go, so.
Emmett, we have you scheduled at the next meeting for your budget.
Seventeen.
Yes. So, just thought I'd remind you.
Yeah.
You know. And I'd like to sit down with you before you present it, if you can, and And our time is kinda tight, but maybe we can fit in a few minutes, even on the seventeen.
No, no, we can get together before that.
Before the snow flies.
Well, that's before the next meeting. Which I hope we don't have snow.
No, me either.
So.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Quick question for Emmett. The leak down at Pillsbury Lake, Deahmetto Road, is that a section that was just paved? Or was it in one of the old sections?
He was thinking it was in the old section and he was thinking that it wasn't gonna be in the pavement.
Okay. Because I know they redid a lot of the lines and I was just hoping it wasn't.
No, no, when I talked to him. Today, yesterday?
Last time.
Yeah. Yesterday. He was thinking that Harold, that's the guy's name. He was thinking that it wasn't on, in the pavement, it was off to the side. And I didn't make it down on that. I went down.
I went down today.
I went down.
Digging off the edge of the road.
Yeah, turned around at the end of the town line in Boswell, but I didn't get down there in the town. I did, I did. No, I didn't. So. Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I do one public comment?
Yes, please. So within the last couple of weeks, we've had deer problems. There's been four reported cases of EHD. And I can't pronounce it, but it's referred to as blue tongue. And I've had to shoot one standing in the road, foaming at the mouth. We've had another one on Pearson Hill Road. Michelle, the clerk, has had two in her pond. And that's where they go. When they get EHD, they head for water and they'll usually die in the pond. So Fish and Game and us pulled two of them out of her pond. So if you see a deer that's acting unusual, call, let us know. 'Cause we wanna get it so that Fish and Game can take it and test it. And the EHD is not transferable from deer to deer or to humans or to other animals. They get it from drinking puddles of water that have no sodium lave in it. And the lave gestates in them and within forty-eight hours after it gestates, they die. So it's fast-acting. Can be contracted to farm animals. So you really wanna make sure, anybody that's got farm animals, try not to have any small puddles of standing water that they can access. And if you go on the Fish and Game website, EHD, just put EHD in and it'll explain everything, how it's contracted. There is no cure, but it's spring and fall now. This is the first cases in the state of New Hampshire and we were lucky enough to get them here. Vermont's got them, New York's got a ton of it, Pennsylvania, Ohio. Maine has none yet. Massachusetts got a little bit, but over in the border, New Hampshire's got it. So if you see any deer acting unusual, please call.
We haven't seen our deer a couple of weeks. Three at the nursery and two over at the farm and we haven't seen them for a couple of weeks now.
It's deer season, they know.
Yeah, I saw a black bear with two clubs today. That was neat.
Which there would be actually, the, the second public service announcement. Especially if you're walking down any of these scenic roads in an evening in places that are not normally driven on, please make sure that you are wearing very bright colors. You don't wanna be mistaken for an animal. All right, thank you, gentlemen. And that moves on to what I believe is the hot topic of the evening. Our old business, the town-owned properties. And so I will actually make a short announcement on this first. Full disclosure, I was personally interested in the Battle Street property and other members of the board may have had ties to possible bids as well, which is why I had made the previous announcement and disclosure about bidding and had planned to recuse myself from this decision for the Battle Street property. Unfortunately for me, I ran out of time and neglected to get a bid in prior to the deadline. As everyone that serves here is on completely equal footing with everybody else in this process, we must also abide by the same rules, so you will not be seeing a bid from me. For full public disclosure, prior to opening any bids, my bid would have met the bid spec and been above the minimum bid, though not by much. I expect that all of the bids we open today will also be qualified and at least the minimum bid and that we would've and will accept the highest qualified bid within the best interests of the town. This is what we have done before with other properties and was made clear that the public wanted us to do at the public hearing we held for the Battle Street property prior to putting it up for bid. With that being said, please take it away, Dana.
Which property would you like to start with?
Battle Street.
Would you do the Battle Street?
Sure, we'll do Battle Street, we just talked about.
Of course, that's not real, I have it in front of me.
We received five bids for the Battle Street property. And I'll just give you your dance card. Would you like to open them or would you like me to open them?
I'd go for it. You've done it for all of the others.
Okay. So we have five bids, the first bid being from Stephen Zanassi at, from seven-eighty-two Marconi Boulevard. Copec, New York, one-one-seven-two-six.
Copec.
Copec.
Copec?
Copec.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's an Indian name.
And this bid is for forty-one thousand, two-hundred, thirty-four dollars. The next bid is from Philip and Andrew Morrell, one-forty-five Little Hill Road, Webster. I said that okay?
Yeah. You gotta get the long line of max up.
I'll work on it. Again, this is for Battle Street. Minimum bid is forty thousand. This bid is for seventy-five thousand, one dollar. The next is from Andrew Moffett, Emily Nolton, eight-ninety-eight Battle Street. And this bid is for one-hundred-five thousand dollars. The next bid is from Rich Droody, six-twenty-one Pine Street in Contuket. And it's very well sealed, am I right? This bid also includes a statement, as is, shall include all contents of house and barn as of September twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, including but not limited to furniture, textiles, appliances, clocks, sewing machines, books, televisions, radios, dishes, et cetera. That bid is forty-three thousand, two-hundred, ten dollars. And the last bid is from Harold French, one-eighteen West Road in Canterbury. And that bid is eighty-one thousand dollars.
That is all those mentioned here in front of us or on the list that was prepared. Is there anything in further?
No, that was, there were five bids.
All right. Do you have any questions or comments on it?
Explain to me.
I move that we accept the highest qualified bid and congratulate them on a new house. An almost new house.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're the next-door neighbors, so.
Enjoy whatever you plan to do with your next-door house.
A horse barn, so.
We go down in the dip?
Yeah, we, yeah, we're down in the dip.
Down in the old house?
Yeah, we want the flat part for a, for a horse barn and my parents, when they get older, so they can come and look at us.
Have your parents around, that's great.
Well, I want her for the cup of sugar, but.
It's an expensive cup of sugar. Well worth it.
Yeah.
All right.
So the next property is at ten-seventy-three Corn Hill Road. There are five bidders on that. I thought that was. The first bid is from Stephen Zanassi, still at seven-eighty-two Marconi Boulevard.
Copec.
Copec, New York. And the bid on this one is sixteen thousand, one-hundred, twenty-three dollars.
I'm sorry, how much was that?
Sixteen, one-twenty-three.
Thank you.
The next bid is from Benjamin Faxon, two-ninety-nine Battle Street in Webster. And this bid is fifteen thousand, one-hundred, fifty-two dollars. The next bid is from Christopher Flu. Fluor?
Fluor.
Fluor, sorry. Ten-seventy-five Corn Hill Road, Webster. Christopher says, "My plans for the property are to level existing buildings, level the land, combine my property with new plant grass, extending parking, a car trailer, new shed, garage for long-term future bigger land will open up more doors for me and raise my property value." And Christopher has bid thirty thousand dollars.
See the young man that just lives off the street?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, nice, seemed like a nice kid. Nice young man, I should say.
The next bid is from Russell Petro.
I wonder who that is?
Three-sixty-six Myrtle Street, Manchester. And Russell's bid is twenty-three thousand dollars. And the last bid is from Harold French, one-eighteen West Road, Canterbury. That bid is for forty-one thousand dollars.
All right, is there anything further?
There is not.
All right. Do you have any other questions or comments for them? All right, I would move that we accept the highest qualified bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations to winner Harold French, who I do not believe is with us this evening. All right, thank you all for your bids and for your attention in these matters. Is there anything further with town-owned property either that is coming up for bid soon or that is being prepared for us to look at?
Fortunately, at the moment, no.
All right.
But I just wanna say to Andrew and Emily, I will send you a note, but we will go from here.
Okay, we're leaving tomorrow. We're going, we just got married. We're going on our honeymoon tomorrow, so if you don't get back to.
Congratulations.
Nice present. Why, that's a nice present.
Very nice.
Yeah, so.
But I'll send you a note.
I, I hear it was a tavern.
It was a tavern. I got moved from Paul.
All right. So that would then move us on to old business budget presentations.
Yes, I think the first budget we're going to hear from is the health inspector.
I'm so worried that someone wants to talk to us. I wanna talk out loud, 'cause I'm loud, I'm Italian.
I want you to know that Paula and I took over Nancy and Nick's health spot.
Health spot?
Yes, they did. What's the health inspectors?
Nancy and Nick were the health inspectors before us.
And my being recorded?
It kinda goes.
It was the most disgusting house I've ever lived in.
And she said it was gonna be an easy job.
He was a doctor.
Well, let me tell you, he wouldn't operate on my dead pig because it was the dirtiest house I've ever been in my entire life. Thousands and thousands of candy wrappers hidden behind the walls, like, dirty, dirty.
Well, believe me, if my parents' house, when we redid a wall, it was newspapers all in.
Oh, I had that. I just took down my kitchen wall. It must be about a hundred pounds of newspapers. Walnuts and mouse.
All right, thank you, everybody. If you wanna keep talking, please head to the tribe outside to continue the meeting.
Jesus, look at that. And everyone's gone, "Bye."
Bye.
Roy, you really should clean out a room.
It'll be over quicker. All right. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lawrence Android, health inspector. First thing, before we get into the budget, I wrote a letter asking that Matt Robley, that lives in town, be considered to be made deputy health inspector. This way, when Paula and I are doing a little bit of traveling, he can take over for us. Now, Matt lives right here on Battle Street. He works for the state of New Hampshire Fire Service in training. He works for the emergency medical services portion of it. He is a registered paramedic. He's also on Webster Fire Department. So I believe he's very well qualified for this position.
So if I could jump in for a second, Roy? This is, the board does not appoint the health officer or the deputy health officer, but the state wants your recommendation. So this is paper, if you agree with Roy, that Matt would be a good fit. If you would sign this paper and then it goes to the state.
Yeah, right there, well, our name. Well, David can't recognize his name 'cause it's printed.
I thought I wouldn't let him print it, but.
That's a good idea.
Oh, that's even better. That's even, mine.
That's almost about the same. Close.
No, it is not. Mine's the only same.
So I'll send that to the state. I don't know how. So I'll send that to the state. I don't know how long it takes.
And I'll notify Matt that it's gone into the state.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. Perfect.
Or Matthew.
Thank you very much.
Okay. This year has been a lot easier compared to last year, when Paula and I first took over. Last year, we probably had about seventy-five hours in for the health inspector. And I did increase the budget last year, and I'm asking for another thousand dollars to make it a two thousand, uh, ninety-dollar budget for the next fiscal year. One thing, if I don't do anything, no invoice goes in for standby or anything like that. We are required to take a couple of, uh, online classes when they have certain things. Excuse me. But some of it does not pertain to us because we don't have restaurants in town. We don't have the big shopping centers and so forth. So, I'm not gonna sit there and watch this. You know, it, it is nice educational, but I have other things to do. But we've had to take a couple of the classes. Now, from January to August, Paula and I did fourteen hours' worth of consulting, going out, doing things and so forth. And this month alone, we've done nine and a quarter hours' worth of details. I'll call them details. The biggest thing was the Blackwater River with the cyanobacteria. We'd done a lot of studying on that. I had to go, uh, when the state first did it and it came back that we had the bacteria in there, uh, the state came out, did another test. I went with the state representative, saw how the test was done, and then a week later, I did it also. And actually, I went up into Salisbury Warner. I went up to where the bridge is off of Warner Road and tested there. And it did come back as positive.
It did?
Yeah.
Wow.
It, it did. But when the state did it, about ten days later, we had the rains, everything was clearing up. So, I, I can't say that the bacteria came from up north and come down to us because they did not test that initially upstream. When the state did the testing, the furthest that they went up was behind the school.
Really?
And I took it upon myself...
I thought they did at the dam.
They did not do, uh, yes. I talked her into go north of the dam, above the dam. She was gonna stop at the school, and I asked her to go behind the dam. And we went behind the dam of Guyboy Hill Road. So, you know, the second, uh, another time on the testing, I went and did all the testing. Like I said, it was still high, but it was starting to go down because of the rains that we received. And then when they did it. And I had all of that happy stuff, and school inspections. So, but in short, I'm asking to increase the budget, to make a total budget, and I'm not looking at coming back in another year asking for anything else unless all of a sudden we get hit with a whole bunch of stuff. But I'm asking for a total budget for ensuing year of twenty twenty-three of two thousand ninety dollars. The ninety dollars, that is for the registration for the Health Inspectors Association and so forth.
Something necessary, and do that.
And that, and that's it. And this...
Will that cover you and both deputies?
It should. If it doesn't, take it, take it out of the extra. I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to nickel-dive it.
Well, I was just trying to make sure that, like, that would actually be the correct...
Yeah. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'm not gonna lose sleep over that. But this was a copy of what we had done so far. So, and I, I do get...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I, that's right.
You can keep it, Roy.
Okay. Uh, I do get calls now and then, just some simple questions, you know, what should I look out for tick bites and different stuff and so forth.
So what made that bacteria get in the river? Do you have any clues?
It, it can be organophosphates, which is fertilizers, or it could be septic.
It just doesn't come naturally?
It just, it, stagnant water and so forth, it, it has stuff in it already, and then it just starts to break down and it can create that. But the two main culprits of what we had was fertilizers and, you know, septic. Now, like I, I said, I went up above into Salisbury Warner, and I forgot that Salisbury's dump is right near the river. When you're driving Warner Road to go into the floodplain, it's on the right-hand side. I don't know how much it backs up to the river. If something might have leached through there into the, I have no idea. But if we have another one break out, that's one of the first places I'm gonna be going to get another test.
Yeah, it's scary because you don't wanna...
It is.
Because our river, that Blackwater, I remember going to the, the hearings when we were done classified A, and so...
Yes.
And then what did the guy from Anderson, he was fighting, do you remember that? He was so mad because we were gonna have to classify the Blackwater River A, and, you know, and all these other rivers weren't A. I said, "Well, maybe we should have them all be A." That would've been a good thing.
Yeah.
So...
But I, I have to, I have to give, uh, credit to, who was it? Ms. Carr? Uh, lives next to Deborah Buckley down off of, uh, Cashell Lane. She's, she taught environmental science in school.
Oh, really?
And she's the first one that noticed the change in the river and took a sample into the lab.
Wow.
And that's what got the ball going. Mr. Jettie, Mike Jettie, he noticed at the end of his dock, before he could walk out and look down and see the rock down below, and he says, "All of a sudden, it's like there was a cloud there, and then bang, nothing." And at his place, it had the largest bloom. That had the highest numbers.
Wow.
At his place. Now, when you looked out from the Jettie house, there was like a small island out there because the water was so low. You could see where that bloom had bubbled. And it, it, it looked like bubbles. And now, that's a major, major concentration.
But now, does the state know this?
Yes.
Does, you know, the state knows this? You told the state, or they know that the river was polluted?
Oh, they, they found out. Like I said, the...
So, but are they looking into any kind of...
Reason?
Reason, yes.
It's other places also. I looked at, uh, Tucker Pond. Tucker Pond was in the same predicament.
Really?
Usually it happens in ponds, not so much in rivers, because it keeps moving.
Wasn't Tucker Pond last year, too?
I believe it was last year, but it was this year also.
Yeah. No, no, I just meant it wa, in addition to this year, it was last year.
Yeah, I believe so. And I, I was looking at maps to see if a stream was coming out of Tucker Pond, coming into the Blackwater, but I couldn't find anything.
No.
So, I can't say why.
Thank you for joining us.
But if, but if something happens, that's why I'm asking for an increase of another thousand dollars, and then I believe that would be the cap.
Thank you.
So I know you can shift money around, but...
Thank you. That budget also includes the funds for the Visiting Nurses Association, which, um, and also CASA, court-appointed special advocates.
They, they sent us, uh, letters and talked on video last year during the budget.
Yes, and I think I have a letter this year, and, and I usually invite them to come talk to you. Um, usually toward the end.
Any other questions?
No. You're doing a great job, really.
Thank you very much.
Who else? Paula, not me.
Yeah. I'll give her credit, too. Keeps you online.
All right. The next budget section.
Yeah.
So that's code enforcement.
Mr. Tatro will be presenting that to you.
All right. So this one, I was happy to see that our new fee schedule was working as intended. Um, and we had upped the fees by, I think, ten dollars last year to cover the new code inspection position, and that sort of evened out. So it's about two thousand one hundred in, two thousand one hundred out. So we're right on track for that. However, I am suggesting an increase of a thousand dollars for code enforcement fees for next year because we have some ongoing issues, and I expect them to continue into next year that likely have, have more hours out in the field. I know we're currently working through the process of how best to utilize the position, and there'll be further discussions on that in the future.
So this is the code inspection line item?
Correct.
And you're suggesting that go to four thousand?
Correct.
Okay. And how has the septic review portion been?
That's been pretty, pretty standard. I wouldn't suggest a change on that because that's, it's usually a hundred and fifty and then a hundred fifty out whenever we do it.
Perfect. All right.
And the last...
Any questions for him on the...
No.
All right.
Last budget, uh, is the emergency management budget, um, which, uh, Rob is the emergency management director. Um, I did not hear from Rob, so I have left the budget to be flat at fourteen. Well, actually, I've reduced the travel and education by twenty-five dollars. It went up twenty-five dollars last year. If you remember, Roy Fangjoy got on the town meeting floor and increased it. We, we put it in for gas or travel. Um, none was used, so I put it back to two hundred, so the fourteen hundred. Now, the twenty-five dollars has been a huge difference.
Great. Are there any other budgets?
Those are the only ones you have tonight.
Okay. So that brings us to new business, the town report cover.
Oh, that was a fun one. So, remember last year, we were talking about potential ideas for doing town report covers in the future, and one of the ideas that was floated was to have the elementary school do some art for the cover. Considering that town report is not that far away, I would like to get permission from the board to contact them to see if that's something we can arrange so they have time to actually do the art and they get on the cover. So is that some of the board's interest?
I think that's a good idea.
Absolutely.
You know, that was, years ago, was my idea for the, to school district when I was on the school board to do the covers, and that worked out great. So somebody from the school, you know, would win the, win the thing about having their artwork.
The board is in agreement.
Huh?
The, the board is in agreement.
Yeah.
It's nice. I think we can get this done. I think it'll look nice, too. And getting them involved will, will hopefully help more people in town want to be part of the process as well.
Also, we're probably gonna need more town reports. A lot of people are gonna want the collectible.
True.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
That's okay.
It is by the townspeople, for the townspeople.
Right.
Anything else in new business?
No.
All right.
Nope.
Uh, any further comments? But, I mean, all right.
I, I do. I would like to talk to the board for a minute, if that's okay, if you have time.
Yeah. Um, do we want to do that before correspondence?
You only have very small thing of correspondence, so if you want to just...
Sure, come on.
Okay.
That's fine.
Um, you know who I am, Sue Roberts. Um, recently, I had a neighbor complain about my two-acre piece being cut off, and we cut it off about five, six years ago. And he approached the board, I believe, and asked for a meeting, correct? And then he didn't show up.
He asked for an appointment, yes.
Yes. Well, he, uh, wrote to DES, and I, I've done everything. I mean, I didn't do anything wrong. We didn't cut too much land off. We didn't excavate too much. We didn't do anything wrong.
But when, when you say "cut off," what exactly do you mean by that phrase?
Well, we cut the trees. You, I don't think you were in town. Yeah, we cut the trees due to the Bittersweet.
Oh, that's cut off. I thought you meant you cut off, like, two acres of land off your property.
No, 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 no. So the two acre...
You just cut the trees.
The two-acre piece that I have that's on Pleasant Street, about five or six years ago, we cut all the trees. It was just a mess because Bittersweet had come in and it started killing all the trees up there. We're having a hell of a time up there on the hill with everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah, it's showing up down here, too.
Yeah, it's not, it's miserable stuff.
It's in every town. It's in Concord. It's pulling the trees down.
Look at Dave Richardson's. It's up in the, his maple trees. It's crazy. So anyways, we, we cut it off. We were thinking we might put a hayfield in, we might put Christmas trees in. My life went kinda in chaos here for the past few years. We let it sit. Wasn't hurting anybody. Um, the neighbor came up and stopped and saw Russell one day on the, on his front lawn while he was mowing, and was quite angry with Russell. Um, and then he called the firehouse and asked to speak with Emmett. And Emmett went and saw him and met with him. He's never approached me. I don't know the man at all, so I hate to speak ill of him or sound ill, but I am uncomfortable with him because he, it sounds like he gets pretty upset. In the process, he said all our, our debris was going down to his house through the, the fifteen-inch culvert pipes, and, and you really should talk to Emmett about this and how the culvert pipes on Long Street, which is a state road, are, and they are fifteen-inch. They come down to the, the corner of Pleasant Street, which is the house I own that Russell lives in, which was my mother's place.
Yeah, I remember that.
So that house there has actually had the water back up into the basement when we've had a major rain event. And I've never sent anything to anybody because, I mean, things happen. I mean, we can't help it when we have torrential rain. And that's what we seem to be getting, more weather events. The water goes down a seasonal, I say seasonal stream. Um, it was kind of a wet area there across the street where Matt, Matt Cummings is now. You probably remember that.
I remember that. Yes, I do. Yep. Now they got a picnic thing or something there.
Yeah, yeah, it used to be, yeah, quite a little area. And then that stream bed went down through the Berwick piece, but now it's got houses all along Long Street. It went down through that piece, and that was a corn patch or Drouse's used to pay it or corn, whatever. So it was a farming piece. Because the land, the topography was that way, you never really noticed it, but the water had a place to go towards Walker Pond. It's always done this. We, we haven't changed anything. We just cut the land off. That was five or six years ago. So he came up, he was angry, he approached Emmett through, through the phone call. Emmett went down and met with him.
Now, you're talking about the guy down going on Long Street, the first house there on the...
No, he's three houses down.
Oh, three houses?
Yeah. So he, he got upset with Emmett, and I'll let, Emmett probably won't say much, but he got upset with Emmett and said that we have an excavator and he needs his yard fixed. And then he said, "Emmett, you're the judge and jury." Then he wrote a letter to DES, which you can see, and it was addressed to Sue Roberts, which I own the property, not my son. Emmett doesn't own it, and I'm not trying to pull any, it's just, it's in my name. So somebody should've come and seen me. Nobody did. He addressed Emmett as the road agent, and that letter went to DES. I immediately called the land surveyor. I had all the lines matched. Um, I pulled all my files, which, when, whenever we've had anything done at the greenhouse or there, we contact who we need to contact, and we have it engineered appropriately. We remeasured everything. We had not done any alteration of terrain over there. There, there's laws that govern all of this stuff. I had applied, done everything right. They wrote me a letter, and I did send it to you guys. I've done everything they've asked me to do, although I didn't need to. We're, in some ways, we are, we're, because we are a working farm, it's not necessary, but at the same time, he is our neighbor and I do care. The issue that I have is that he gets all the water from that seasonal runoff or seasonal stream from basically both sides of Pleasant Street and both sides of Long Street off the top of the hill. They're fifteen-inch pipes. And now I'm gonna throw your road agent under the bus because he came home to tell me this. The man has a twelve-inch culvert pipe in his backyard that he's installed. It clogs with leaves. It clogs with debris. He's afraid that the windows in his cellar are gonna blow out when the water comes down because he's, he is getting a great volume of water when it rains. So when all of that fills up, if it's backing up into my basement at my mother's house, you know we're getting water. water. And that's all been in the last probably eight years. It's when we have a major event, and then it goes down and it goes to his house. So he's upset, and I feel bad talking about somebody that isn't here, but he's upset because he thinks something's gonna happen to his house, which we can all understand.
Logical.
But that isn't up to Emmett or I to fix because that's a seasonal runoff. So Emmett did tell him, and I'll let Emmett speak to this when I'm done, but he told him, "You need a plan, and you need to go to DES." Well, he went to DES and he threw us under the bus because he thinks we're sending him all the water, but we aren't. I mean, they've been out there like-
It's a hill.
Water runs down hills.
Water comes right, exactly.
And it's, we haven't changed the path. We haven't altered anything. And I'm not really, the culvert pipe that's on Pleasant Street, and I hate to do this, probably isn't right. It's probably too small, and it doesn't help when the water-
Because otherwise, it shouldn't back up for you.
Correct, correct. But my issue is this, and I think you guys can see it. I did talk to Dana and Russell today before I approached you. Emmett is your road agent. This man is upset. I've done everything I can do as a, as a property owner to appease him, but it isn't my fault. Do you see what I'm saying? And Pleasant Street does have, you know, the tire tracks in the road, and the water runs down that, and it's only when it pours. I mean, and we have those events more and more.
Yes, we do.
I'm really not sure what the answer is. Probably should talk to the road agent, and I, I did throw him under the bus tonight, but if this man has a twelve-inch culvert pipe in his backyard and the water runs, has always run that way, and something happens, he's the road agent and he knows that now. If you guys don't know that, if something happens and he goes, "Well, I tried to talk to the road agent," or "I tried to get my, this landowner to do something," it would just, it just, it's messy, and I don't want it to be messy. I'm not sure what we do. We did, I did have Emmett meet me with the DES lady when she came out. I've given you all the correspondence that I have, and they just said, "Could you please put some socks on or something along the road to, you know, just kinda make this guy feel like he cares, you know?" Like, sure, but we don't wanna spend any money on it. They, I mean, they were very clear. They didn't want me to go to any expense. I said, "Well, hay bales do." "Yeah, hay bales would be great." I told them about how we had trees we were gonna put them in, and Russell and I and Emmett, we got right to it and we got them in because we don't wanna upset this man, but he is upset. And God forbid, if his windows did blow out of his cellar, which I don't really understand either, Dana, but if they did, I'd feel bad.
Well, what are they, right on the ground?
I think-
Don't you, usually you have windows in a cellar, you have like-
The water backs up and then he's afraid it's-
So, so if you start up Pleasant Street where all the water comes all the way, it starts at Dave Richardson-
Yeah.
On one side, and the church on the other.
On Long Street.
Long Street. Then comes down Long Street. Just before Carries, between Blojitz and Carries, there's a pipe that brings the water from Blojitz side to the left-hand side coming up from Bosworth.
Okay.
Okay? So the water all makes the corner, and there's a fifteen-inch pipe there that goes across, and then on the other side of Russell's driveway, there's another fifteen-inch pipe that comes across that goes into the same valley. Well, that valley used to be four feet wide and four feet deep, and if you go all the way down in behind where they put that horse riding rake in, you can see how it's six feet deep down there and five feet wide. Well, this, this gentleman, he, I don't, he put a one-foot pipe, two-hundred-and-thirty feet long, so that's gonna slow your vol, volume down in that ditch, filled it all in, got a beautiful back lawn. So now, all the leaves, pine needles and sticks, I mean, the gravity of the water pushes them down to the, to the header of the pipe and plugs it up, so-
And they're all mine.
So-
Oh, of course.
Yeah, if they were a hundred-dollar bills, they wouldn't be. So what happens is, it's coming downhill, the pipe gets filled up, so the water comes up out of the ditch and floods this whole driveway out, and he, he was all worked up. When that blows my basement window out, then he, you know, and whatever's, but back when they did the same thing up on Clough and Samben, not-
We've had this happen.
Not, not two-hundred-and-something feet of pipe, but they, they rerouted and blocked all the water off and slowed it up so it wouldn't go on their land anymore. Bracket Sheffy walked down-
No, it wasn't Bracket Sheffy.
No.
Bart?
He was the one that-
Right, Bart.
Bart walked down through there, and when we got done, the landowner had to pay to have all them turnouts put back in because they've been there for a hundred years.
Well, it seems to me that property across from your parents' house was always really wet. I mean, I remember that.
And now there's a house there, so, I mean-
Yeah, well, right, now there's a house, right.
Ricky built a house there, and I remember my father arguing with him. I mean, this is ancient history, but you, you know, you look back on it, you go, there was-
He was right. Your father was right.
Yeah. So I just, my concern is this, where we walk that fine line with Emmett being, he's not your employee. None of us, none of us, first of all, there's not a person in this room that wants ill will for anybody. You know what I mean? We, we don't want him to have any peril or anything go wrong. I also don't want the man showing up on my dooryard and yelling at my son or yelling at my husband, my partner. I don't like it. I have zero tolerance for that. I mean, we'll help anybody, you know? This is something we can't help him with, but you need state, you need other people that are beyond us to help him. And what I don't want is this to come back and bite you guys in the butt, but also bite me in the butt, because it will bite me in the butt. I will have to pay for an attorney to defend us. You will have your attorney to, because we're not in the same, but we are, I know, are in them, you know? So how can we handle this, help this man, or let him know that-
So the-
We did bring it up to DES.
I'm, I'm very glad that you came to, to clear any issues with, with yourself. Regarding DES and notices and mails and stuff, anytime there is a DES action, whether it's request for information, or whether it's enforcement or finding action, et cetera, by DES, they CC us and the Conservation Commission.
I'm aware of that.
That is for informational purposes because we are not involved with what DES does. And so, the first comment would be that, yes, thank you for making sure that everybody understands the, the history of what you did and that it's all appropriate and that DES has been out, we've been providing DES all the information. That is good for public clarity and to know that, you know, you guys aren't trying to do anything funny.
Right.
Because I'm sure you're not. The, but the town is not really involved. It is a, either a state road issue with the way that the state designed culverts, or it is a private property issue with you guys caused problems, which it sounds like DES has said, "No, you really didn't." Or it is a problem with how they went through the engineering, the DES process when the house was built, or the backyard was re-engineered to handle the water and it doesn't look like that. None of those should involve the town, and none of those should involve Emmett as the road agent.
However, this, this proves that he was labeled as the road agent for the town of Western.
Yes.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not like I made it up in-
Oh, right, right.
Right, right, right. Okay.
But in any sort of, like, they can name him as the, as the road agent if they want to, and maybe that's them trying to say he did it and he knows better. But at the same time, you're basically showing that, you know, you're going through the whole process to prove to DES that, no, this wasn't the problem. And so, I think, I'm not gonna give you any legal advice, but I don't feel like the town is in jeopardy of having to defend itself.
But is it Long Street? That's a state road.
That is a state road.
So that should be their problem. It's more the Long Street problem, not our problem.
Well, you gotta-
But you have Pleasant Street. It drains onto Pleasant.
You gotta think, you got two pipes on Pleasant Street that go from one side of, the high side of the road to the low side of the road, that be into that stream when it's a runoff, but when it's raining or snowmelt, it is the town's pipes, and the water comes all the way down from the cemetery. There's a pipe above the, in the, on the other end of the cemetery, but that water all comes down that road, so it's town whatevers, and it's in the ditches, and the town pipes that are going across, that are bringing the water across-
And that pipe is too low and it's-
And them pipes, Bonnie put them pipes in two thousand and two. They're rotted out. One's a plastic pipe. They're too small to start with. They're not deep enough.
So in theory, when you fix these, the problem would actually get worse for this gentleman?
Well, no, because he, it would just, it wouldn't hold the water back. It would just go. It would probably make it, it isn't gonna make it any better in, in, he, he created, he created his own problem because if he hadn't have put the, filled that natural brook in behind his house, which is against the law.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I guess the question would be, when did the culvert go in behind the house? Was that approved as part of the building, which would then maybe be an issue? Or was it something he just did, and then now he's opened himself up to a DES issue?
Well, that's what I, that's how I see it, but I don't know. I don't have any dates and he wasn't really involved.
I wanted you, I, I wanted you to be aware where he was named, and Emmett isn't on that property. I mean, his, his name isn't on there. So for him to say, "Well, you're the judge and jury," not show up to this after Emmett met with him, and then he didn't show up to your meeting that was scheduled, it just, it, to me, for obvious reasons, it paints a light, and I, 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 I don't wanna argue with anybody.
I will simply err on the side of hoping that he has decided that after discussions and going through with the process, he has seen that it is better to handle the problems that he has instead of trying to create them for other people. And so I will hope that that is the case and that anything with DES is overlooked for you.
I mean, they were, they were nice as pie.
But we'll find out from DES. I mean, if DES sends you something else, then-
Yeah, they said, "Thank you very much." Exclamation point. Jen's fine. I mean, I said, "If you need anything else, let me know." But I just don't, I've brought it to your attention now that I'm uncomfortable. What you do is up to you, what you've been made aware. And that's all I can, right?
Yeah, right, because if we don't hear from him, you know.
Right. So, but in the future, if anything happens, I've tried.
Thank you very much.
And I hope that that pipe gets bigger because I don't want the water in that basement anymore. Because you never heard me complain when it was, so I just dealt with it while you were out and about.
All right.
Yeah, just him.
That's right.
So that moves us on to correspondence.
Yes, we only have one piece of correspondence for you to know about, and it is the annual bill from Merrimack County.
Oh, lovely.
Which is due December nineteenth for six-hundred-sixty thousand, nine-hundred-twenty-five dollars.
And we have to pay it. We have the money, so pay it away.
We usually pay it the day of, the day of due date. I'm usually over there in county trying to break in that day.
We like the interest.
Yeah, we, yeah, right. Well, I-
Everyone's ignoring you when you go in there and I'm holding a check for six-hundred-thousand, waving it.
Bring it to my house. I won't ignore you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so before we go on to-
If you beat the county, I'll take the school check.
Motions and minutes. Do we have any further public comments?
I think you did a good job tonight.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else before we go on?
Nope, sounds good to me.
All right, so let's get into it.
Our company is going.
Was it something we said?
Yes.
If Russell would've brought the donuts to take the edge off, we would've stayed a little longer.
All right, maybe next time.
Or made another pizza or something.
Yeah, really.
You missed pizza day.
All right, so I will start with the earlier meeting minutes, which were our work session, which was September fourteenth. That was discussing the personnel policy. That was our first work session on that.
Just one slight change.
Yes.
Line sixteen, board went over "was" the vacation. Just get the, get the "was" out of there, please.
Okay.
All right, thanks. I will contact my editor in chief.
Yeah, that's right. Smack 'em all.
Any other ones for that one?
No, I didn't see anything.
Okay. And so then I will move to the September nineteenth meeting minutes, which I do have a, a correction and a clarification. Line sixteen, page one-
It must be that sixteen line.
The motion you have listed as Chairperson Hemonway, but that was actually Dee made the motion to donate to the Mora Fund.
I remembered it differently. That's fine. That's an easy fix.
That's right. Smart enough.
Okay, I'll do better.
And in line forty-two of that-
Oh, would be forty-two.
It says, "Chairperson Hemonway asked if the cost of living increase included, also included the merit increase."
Oh, my God.
Could we include that?
And it's, it's not incorrect, but I wanted to suggest the change of, "Ask if the increase included both the cost of living and merit increase."
Okay, cost of, both. Included both. Okay, yeah, yeah, right, it is. Both the merit increase.
Okay, I'm gonna go home and cry on my jack pillow. All right.
And so, I believe that is all of it.
I think we have one more, so the data's really in there last minute.
What was that?
Yeah, so that was everything that I have for the September nineteenth minutes, and that gives us September twenty-eighth as the last set of minutes.
And those ones are awful.
Which was-
To rush those ones?
Let's see, this was, oh, the Tuesday, okay, yeah. This was the, the last work session.
I would, sick time instead of to be up from twenty-six to increase, no, increased, not, increased from twenty-six to thirty hours. Just sounds better.
What line was it?
Huh?
Thirty and thirty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Because from sick time increased from twenty-six to thirty hours.
Yeah, qualified working hours or something of that nature. But, yeah, it's not incorrect, but it can sound more clear to people.
It sounded clear to me at the time.
Well, it is, as long as we read it, but-
Well, reading is, you know, a dying art.
Fair. Sometimes I can't see it well enough.
That's true. It's my glasses.
That's funny. I need glasses. I can read without my glasses, so, but I can't see anything else without my glasses.
Any further suggestions to edits for the minutes?
No, it sounds good.
They all got amended.
All right. They all got amended. All right. So I would move that we approve the minutes from September fourteenth, nineteenth, and twenty-eighth as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that moves us to motions.
Motions.
I just got the one.
Oh, no.
Is this all?
That's trustees.
There should be the trustees, and I believe we've got the one for the, uh, for the visit of the digital documents for ARPA as well.
That's coming.
Because we pushed that up from last time.
You've got actually three more.
Oh, fine.
I want to keep you busy.
Oh, right.
Trouble. The side stuff to keep.
All right. Because Dana's keeping you overly busy.
A request that the trustees of trust funds issue a check payable to Fleece and Flower Farm in total of twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars for invoices. You had labeled three invoices.
Oh, my God, sorry.
Uh, six-nine-zero-two, six-nine-zero-three, six-nine-zero-four, six-nine-zero-five, six-nine-zero-nine, six-nine-one-zero. These invoices for work on closed Pinbridge Road and Concord Drive, and to be withdrawn from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Um, then the next one I have is that one that I presented last week and we waited. Uh, this is the one that we wanted to take out of, pay out of the ARPA money. We are expecting CompuTech.
I need this, sorry.
Um, I'm coming in early tomorrow because CompuTech's coming in to add the memory to the server. And then they're gonna work with, um, New England Document to get it installed.
Now, when they talked, let me double-check on this. When we talked to them, this was listing the annual software maintenance being from eight-twenty-five to eight-twenty-five as the year. Is that something that has been?
I talked to them the other day about that. Because I said, we'd like it to start when they install it, and they said they would do that.
Perfect.
So I'll have them redo that and send me a notification on it.
So I would move to authorize payment from the town ARPA funds payable to New England Document Systems in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and thirty-two, six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars for invoice two-zero-three-zero-three-one. For software maintenance and record retention system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Deal, sir.
Thank you. The next one, I had spoken to you last time about paying Unitil bills out of MasterCard. And when I added up the Unitil bills, I didn't have enough credit for MasterCard, as you had said. So, um, this is similar to what we do with MasterCard to directly charge the checking account for these. I think, again, that will save us, for some reason, utilities just don't get the checks in time. For, save us ridiculous late fees and things like that.
That's what they want. They want the late fees, come on.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm scared to death that the bill's coming out next month. I mean, or whenever they're ready.
Well, that's gonna be the fun part. I'm going through that right now.
I think I heard on the news it was seventy-seven percent somehow.
Yeah, some ridiculous.
Yep.
And yet they're, the chief people in that office are making well over millions of dollars, you know?
Of course, yeah. And I will say that I, I ran it before you approved it, which wasn't really the thing I liked to do, but I didn't wanna be late again.
And the, yeah, there, as a public utility in New Hampshire, they are not allowed to make profit off of supply, and, and they are limited in the amount. And I don't know if it's a dollar amount or a percentage or whatever, that they're allowed to make from maintenance and, you know, service of lines and so on and so forth. But that is only how much the company is allowed to continue making as a profit. And of course, salaries and bonuses reduce the amount of profit you have.
Oh, God, there's always a way.
And last is the one that you see every month, and it's the MasterCard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they can have that back.
What's this?
That's the MasterCard bills, and again, the telephone bills are in.
I love to spend the most money.
I do, always, yeah. Well, I have needs, Dee.
It's not all his fault. Sometimes I yell at him to order stuff. I have needs too. For example, labels.
What's that, labor?
Labels.
Labels.
And boxes.
Labels.
Thank you. That's all I have for that.
Not to be used in the same project. Did we already sign the normal?
Oh, no, that's coming next.
It's coming. Don't get excited. Not going home yet.
First of all, I wonder if you would sign, this is the MS one. This is the report that goes to the state, um, giving our total taxable property. It's gone up about three million dollars.
Gone up in a year?
Yeah.
That's pretty good. Is that your house?
I, I wish it were.
Well, we just, we just, you know, we go through people and we pick people we don't like.
Yeah.
There are new houses in town, but there's also been increases in some of the utility stuff. Which is always pleasant. Yes, it's nice when the utilities have to pay our taxes for us.
Yes.
It's that Clyde app going to work. And in theory, they will, uh, actually be installing more stuff.
There you go, John Hancock.
So then we'll get even more. But who knows when that actually happens?
Oh, I can read that.
Every once in a while.
Every once in a while you impress me. Jesus, look at that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'll have to do a better job at disappointing.
And finally, this is the manifest. We have in there George Sansucci, our utility appraiser, sent his annual bill for ten thousand, eight seventy-five. We have the famous Merrimack Valley School District for the October payment of three-oh-one-seventeen. Fleece and Flower Farm, thirty-one-hundred. Carrot Tops, thirty-three-twenty-five for the new fly pole that you approved for the parks.
Carrot Top, that sounds like a singer.
Comedian.
Oh, comedian, okay.
All I can picture is this big carrot with a tip on it.
That's really somebody.
It's not too far off.
Carrot Top.
And that was from money that Brenda, you had encumbered for Brenda last year.
Oh, yeah, were we supposed to put in for our election hours? I know sometimes we've been said yes and sometimes we've been told no.
I don't know. Do you, does?
We haven't, we haven't, and then we have, and then we haven't, and then we have, so.
I think that some people, I mean, I think some people, and I only know this because I'm not the election guru here, but I know that some people do not ask to be paid, then volunteer. And those that do, usually Michelle, I guess they must tell Michelle and she puts the paperwork in. So if you're interested in being paid, I would mention it to Michelle.
It's the hardest thing to sit here for eight, well, not even.
When the state requires that we be there the whole day.
Yeah.
I have to tell you something. I had never seen a town where all three select board members were there the whole day.
Really? You know, I don't think I remember the first time I was a select.
This usually has to be one.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You know?
We've, I actually asked that of, uh.
I mean, I'm sure it's true.
And they said that, no, they, they asked, and it's pretty clear that it's supposed to be all.
Really?
And that if we're not there, we're to be summoned by the county sheriff. The county sheriff is supposed to be sent to get us.
Please.
Oh, I'm sure he's, has nothing better to do than to drive him to you.
Especially on election day.
It was definitely entertaining to hear that.
Oh, my God.
But.
Well, that'll make nobody wanna be a selectman. That's one good reason.
I would think.
Do I have anything else to sign? Can I give you a pen back?
No. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, um, I, I'm working tomorrow and then I am off for eight days.
Oh, my, where are you going, someplace?
I'm going to Arizona to look at a big hole in the ground. Uh, Maureen and I have been married fifty years this month.
Congratulations.
So she was gonna go kick him in the big hole.
So I have a feeling she's gonna try and kick me in the hole, but fifty years is long enough to live with anyone.
Your insurance policy, that's a problem.
She's been asking me where I keep my stuff, you know, so.
So Arizona, really. Well, at least you're not doing Florida. You might have a little time, there's nothing left.
Terrible.
I was gonna say, that hole has been filled by water.
Well, if we don't see it, then we'll have to do something else, but it'll be nice. We're looking forward to it.
You ever been to Arizona before?
I have.
Oh, you have? Oh, she hasn't. Oh, wow.
I went when I was seventeen to look at the Grand Canyon.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I drove out there and.
By yourself? No, with friends?
No, I went out with my sister.
Oh, that was neat.
But, you know, we were both young then and, and.
I guess so. Seventeen's pretty young.
You know, I, I, she was older than, she's older than I am. Well, she's seventy-seven now, I'm sixty-eight, so that's nine, so she would've been twenty-six. I don't think she was ever that young, but anyway.
Do you remember being seventeen?
Yes, and I can remember I knew everything. Oh, that's brilliant.
When I was seventeen, I wouldn't have, all I, I wouldn't have thought I was gonna ever be a selectman, write papers or anything else, so.
And here we are, and if anyone wants to be a select board member, come on up. We, we elect them every year. Please come talk to us about what is involved and, and what you wanna do. And we'll try to help you out. That's for the. So, is there anything further?
Not for me.
No. I would move that we close this meeting at eight-fifty-six.
Second.
I agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is Dana running to turn the camera off? All right. Dana really wants to turn that camera off.
Let's hope we figure it out.
Well, that stings. I thought I was gonna win for a second there.